The regular meeting for August the fourteenth is going to start at this time. We would ask those who can and will, would you stand, we would ask Judy Gurrie if she would lead us in the invocation.
This is an invitation to all to turn our attention to spirit within known by many names, friends, or Quakers refer often to the sacred as inner light or inner teacher. May this meeting begin with a time of quiet recollection of openness. May each person and the body of the city council as a whole be informed by the wisdom and love at work among us all to seek the common good for our city, for all people in all districts. May we move into a short time of quiet. Amen.
I'm going to ask the Reverend Dr. C.M. Johnson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would like to thank Judy Gurrie for leading us in the invocation and Dr. C.M. Johnson for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. The minutes of July the twenty-fourth have been received. If there are no corrections from council members, those minutes will be approved as Resolutions and special recognition. For the record, the mayor is not here. Mark Russell is not here tonight. The mayor, however, will be returning soon. He had another engagement, but he will be coming as soon as he leaves the other engagement. Those of you that got copies of the agenda, you can see that the mayor has a presentation to the Fire Fire Appreciation Month proclamation, and he'll do that when he arrives. There are no resolutions from the city council tonight. Oh, John, you?
Dr. showers, the mayor requested that I present the proclamation his behalf at this time.
Well, John? I don't think it's on.
If I could have Chief McFarland join me up here. While he comes up, it's my honor to represent the mayor in presenting this proclamation recognizing the outstanding service of our firefighters. I won't read all the wherlasses, but as you can imagine, it describes just how proud we are to be on the same team with Huntsville Fire Rescue. We are proud of the work that they do. They do a phenomenal job and are passionate about the work that they do in ensuring the public safety for this community. And they have done that for many, many years and will know they'll continue to do it for many years to come. So it's my honor to present a proclamation declaring August Huntsville's Fire Fire Appreciation Month. And like Chief McFarland to accept this on behalf of his team, I'll give him just a moment to make some comments.
Thank you, Ms. Towne, I appreciate it. Just want to say a thank you for this and the council. The month of August, I'm really proud of what our fire department does every day along with everybody else. Kind of one of the driving things behind this proclamation was the Muscular Dystrophy Association. The firefighters nationwide have partnered with Muscular Dystrophy Association since nineteen fifty-four and never let them down a year. We've always had fun drive to try to help them beat this terrible disease. And so they actually came forward and asked this across the nation to have this month, month of August, this firefighter appreciation, because typically, as I can remember back through my career, you know, the telephone comes early fall, so this was a lot of time where we was trying to raise funds to get ahead of that and have those funds ready for that. So we really appreciate our guy supporting that cause and thank y'all for the proclamation.
There are no proclamations from the council. Are there other special recognitions, announcements, business with outside legal representation? We have none for tonight. We're item six, public hearings. Public hearings to be held. Public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of boarding and securing against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
Yes, council. This property identified in this resolution was declared unsafe by community development. The owner was given thirty days in accordance with the unsafe building ordinance to get permits and start work on correcting the noted violations. Since the owner failed to respond to the notices and since the property was standing open and accessible, community development staff boarded and secured the property. Attachment A identifies the owner and the dates that community development took action and the cost for boarding and securing the property. The total cost was three hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. The owner received written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action.
Are there anyone here tonight that would like to address this issue? Hearing none. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, but this item one would be approved. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. That item has passed. A public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
Yes, this resolution identifies thirty-six properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. These properties identified on attachment aid by the owner and location. The owners received written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of our ordinance and were given fourteen days to correct the violation. All thirty-six owners failed to respond and community development issued work orders to cut these properties at a total cost of eight thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and twelve cents and an average cost of two hundred twenty-seven dollars and one cent. Attachment A also identifies the date and the cost for cutting these properties. The owners received a written request by regular mail for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that the property assessments be placed on these properties in order to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action and could wish to speak tonight.
Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address this issue? Hearing none. The hearing is closed. A motion?
Moved for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that this item would be approved. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. Item has passed. Three, public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cleanup and removal of debris against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
Yes, this property identified in this resolution was previously declared a nuisance and authorized for cleanup and removal. The resolution authorizes for the assessment of the cost and removal of debris from the property listed. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that community development took action, and the cost of removal and cleanup debris from the property. The cost was one hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none. This hearing is closed. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that this item would be approved. Those that support that motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. Thank you, Mr. Public hearings to be set. A resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the east side of Slaughter Road and North of Farrell Road from resident two A district to resident two B district to be set September the twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen.
Mr. President, I so moved that the hearing be set for September twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen.
It has been moved and properly second that this hearing would be set for September
the twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. Motion has passed and it is set for September the twenty-fifth. A resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Article Three, Definitions, Section Three, Dot One, Interpretation, amend Article Fifteen, Resident Two B District, Section Fifteen, One, Uses permitted, amend Article Twenty, Neighborhood Business, C One District, Section Twenty, Dash One, Uses permitted, amend Article Twenty-Three, General Business, C Three District, Section Twenty-Three, Point One, Uses permitted, amend Article Forty, Light Industry District, Section Forty-One, Point One, Uses permitted to add assisted living facilities. This is set for September the twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen, at a regular council meeting. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that this hearing will be set for September the twenty-fifth. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. Has been set for September the twenty-fifth. Resolution to set a public hearing for Michelle Jordan doing business as Metro Taxi Cab Company is to be set August the twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that this will be set for August the twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen. Those that support that motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've been doing a little signaling, and I guess just for clarification, there's some people that might be interested in knowing. This Michelle Jordan hearing is not related to the Michelle Jordan who we have at City Hall, so I just wanted to clarify any confusion on that.
Communications and reports. Communications from the public. As I call your name out, I do want you to come, give your name, address, and your subject, and you have three minutes in which to address the council. Dr. Clarence Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Provider. My name is Dr. Clarence Johnson. I live at thirty-three oh-two Butchery Drive, zip code three five eight one zero. I would like to speak this evening briefly. I was praying to the mayor regarding the school board, which comes, which is established in his city and does, in a sense, come under his purview since the city council does grant funds to the school system. The issue that I'd like to address is the nineteen seventy court order with regards to the majority to minority transfers. Now, it says that these would be allowed and that students would be allowed to transfer in that particular situation. However, we have gone to a, the city school system has gone to a online registration only, and it's my concern that their having done such would impede some other parents who would want to take advantage of the majority to minority transfer system, but they have, they lack the knowledge to use computers. The other thing that I would like to address is that according to the school board policy, six dash three, one through ABC, it states in a policy that when there are not enough space for those who have applied for majority to minority transfer, that these students will be selected by a lottery. Now, I don't understand why they would do a lottery as to opposed to a first come, first served basis. A lottery seems to me to leave room for discretion and deceit as to within selection. And so I really do appeal not only to the board itself, but to governance in its entirety that they relook this particular policy of six point three dot one of the school board policy. The other thing of concern to me in the community of North Huntsville is that I applaud Chief Lewis Morris and the officers of the Huntsville Police Department for doing a great job in reducing the crime rate over in the Blossomwood area. And according to the news article I read on AL dot com, they will be going also to the Gulf Road area, which seems to push this initiative further to the south. Now, according to the article, that this initiative was reducing-
Mr. Johnson, your time is up. Do you need-
Mr. Provider, if I could have one more minute, I would have certainly appreciated, sir.
Some members? Okay. Go ahead.
This initiative going to Gulf Road pushes it crime reduction further south. Now, according to the article, it states that reduction in auto theft and home burglaries, which is very important, but I wonder when they're going to get to the north where there are murders, murders that are being done by young people and all of these guns that are in the street. When does crime reduction by intensified and intentional effort hit North Huntsville, Alabama? Thank you, sir.
showers, if I could, I'd like to address the last question.
Go ahead.
The, the police department has been running some special task force in certain areas, targeting some areas where we've seen some spikes in crime and things, and it's, it's based specifically on their analysis of some areas, and they'll have the flexibility then to move those to other areas as they go. Chief Morris has fairly routinely pushed to me reports of their progress and those task force out of the north precinct, and I'd be happy to share that with council. I can forward you the emails as we, as we get those weekly reports on the efforts of those special task force. Would be happy to, to share that with council, and then you can share that with your constituents.
I think that the fact that Dr. Johnson has raised this as a concern, if we're going to publicize one area of town where initiatives are going on, then we ought to publicize where all of the initiatives are, whether it's in the north, south, east, or the west. Is that something that you can make sure that happens, John?
Yes, sure, we can. I don't, I've not seen the specific article that, that he referenced, and so I don't know if that was a result of somebody advertising it or just a reporter particularly focusing on a particular area. So I'm not sure what the source of that was, but it's not, you know, we're not attempting to, to only talk about one part, not the other. I don't think that, that result, that article probably did not result from us particularly advertising one, one particular area, but, you know, we certainly happily talk to you about the activities that we have ongoing.
Okay. Thank you. All right, sir. Darren Alexander. Is there Darren here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's your last name?
Alexander.
Okay. Would you come to the mic?
I don't have anything.
All right, sir. Thank you. Pastor TC Johnson.
Good evening, Pastor TC Johnson, eighteen hundred Sparkman Drive. Wanted to address the, the story that broke on channel forty-eight on the way. Pregnant woman was treated at a traffic stop for a minor violation is indicative of the insensitive, dehumanizing behavior that North Huntsville citizens suffer at the hands of what should be a police department that protects its citizens. I said police department, knowing that there are some hard-working professional officers in the north precinct, but there's an old saying that one bad apple spoils the whole barrel. When I saw the clip, I had an immediate flashback of the mother who was stopped by an officer and her trainer. According to the court transcript, the officer had to be observed in a hostile situation, and this one evidently she forced. But at the end of the day, the mother was, who was trying to get to her daughter's birthday event, was sprayed with mace multiple times, pulled out of her car automobile, pounced upon by full male officers, and suffered in a deal that no citizen should ever suffer. Then the flash went to seven, to the seventy-nine-year-old veteran who was treated like a wild animal, being pounced upon by officers, and ended up in the hospital having to have major surgery on a shoulder that had been torn apart by the brutal force of men who acted more like the Ku Klux Klan of old and servants who protect. The saying one vision, one Huntsville, does that really mean one vision for some Huntsville? Also, we have noticed that of late, the city seems to be generally concerned about hiring more minority police officers. That is not only needed, but we believe it must be if we are to prevent Huntsville from the potential of becoming a Ferguson, Missouri. If you, your concern for diversity is an honest one, why did we change the academy supervision after we had one of the largest minority graduation classes the forces ever witnessed? I was at the council, and we graduated eight that time, that cycle. Shortly after that, our, the structure was changed, and the people who had accomplished that were moved out of a success, something being a success. Now, if you are saying that you want success, why don't you use the people who produce the results? At this moment, we are back to where we were before, which is nothing short of a nepotism nightmare. If the mayor and the rest of city governance really want to change the minority disparity of the force, you have the people capable of doing so, but the actions that have been taken and your words to this point are incongruent at best and political stunts at worst.
Chris Dayton.
Hello, Chris Dayton, nineteen oh-six Wooddale Drive. This, this week I'm showing up, work sent me. I'm part of the work-life council at my company in Research Park, and one of the things we were trying to do was get some of these food trucks that we've seen all out through the city, come out and visit us at work, and, and when we investigated into that, there was evidently some sort of zoning problem out in Research Park, and, and we were told that we couldn't get there. They could come out there and cater, and I, well, first of all, I'm loving the food trucks. I know we've been cautious about food trucks in the past, and I think that this is really blossomed into something really interesting, and I, and I just want to make sure that, I don't know, we stay out ahead of this and, and take a look at some of those zoning regulations and make sure they're really serving us. And, and I, I think there's also a risk of like getting too many food trucks for too small a pond, and I think it's important that we kind of be forward-thinking so we make sure the pond's big enough to kind of handle all that. I think, I think they've been a real, real hit, and we want them out there in Research Park, and we'd really take, be interested in you guys taking a look at, seeing if you can do that. Also, I would love one in five points, too, so I don't know what we can do about that, but thank you guys for your time.
Delia Van Landingham.
Thank you. I'm glad you got my name right. I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Dr. showers and Mr. Culver, for your help in our situation and to update you that we have, in fact, cut the fence post down to the eight-foot level that Mr. Jeffryon suggested that he wanted to see happen, and I believe Dwight has worked on some insurance for the city's liability. I think it's five times the limit of the city's liability, so I'm looking forward to working with you and encouraged by the mayor's statement to the Huntsville Times about meeting and getting a resolution to this issue, and thank you all for your help.
Dwight Wright.
Thank you. Dwight Wright, two thousand and five, Kildare Street. A lot of this will be a reiteration of what Ms. Van Landingham just shared, but we wanted to give you an update on the fence situation at Kildare. I know it's been before you quite a few times, and wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of what was going on and hopefully to clarify a few points that still seem to be being discussed, but maybe aren't clear to everyone yet. From the city's point of view, it was our understanding there were two major points of contention, two problems. The first was the height of the fence and the, the design of it, and through our negotiations with the city, an eight-foot height was agreed upon, and as she just let you know, we have lowered the fence to eight feet. That gives everybody a, a easy visual to see what that's going to look like, and if you, if you look at that and also look at the sketches that have been done and provided, I think you can get a clear picture of what the fence is going to look like, and I think it'll be a very attractive fence. I actually think it's a great asset to that part of town. The second issue that kept coming up was the liability issue, and as has been pointed out, we've offered to add the city as an additional insured on my homeowner's policy, which would cover them up to half a million dollars. And it's my understanding, and I've got this from my attorney, that under Alabama state law, cities have a cap of a hundred thousand dollars, so this would actually be more, a hundred thousand dollars for bodily entry, so this would actually be more coverage than the, than the city would actually have or need in a situation like that. And, and again, I think a lot of people have misunderstood or thought that there might be a way around this, or this wouldn't be binding. It's my understanding through conversations with my attorney that this would be written as part of the agreement. I agree to identify the city maintaining the policy as part of the agreement, so the city indeed would not be liable if, if there was an accident associated with the fence. And unless I'm misunderstanding that, I think that, that takes care of the liability issue, which seems to be a major point of, of concern, and understandably so, the city wouldn't want to be liable for that. That should address it unless there's something that we don't know about, and we have not heard that yet. Which leaves us with the, with the remaining issue that was an issue on my side, and that being that we add the language in there, that the license would be revocable for good cause, and I think that still is producing some confusion. It's, I, I, from the feedback I'm getting, it seems like people think that that would limit the city's ability to revoke the license if there was, if there was a reason, if more development were needed in that area. I guess for, if some reason the city decided that there was a need to widen Kildare to three lanes instead of two, that they couldn't do that with that license agreement, but it's my understanding and our intent in offering or asking for those words that that would still be doable if there were a legitimate municipal need or a problem was created by the fence, that it still could be revoked. It would just need to be stated, the reason would be stated. And again, if you refer back to the comments that my attorney, Mr. Butler, made earlier in July when he discussed that, he said that's, that's common language to be used. So just wanted to give you an update on that, and again, we are thankful for the comments that the mayor made in the paper and-
Mr. Wright, your time is up. You need another minute?
Just a few more seconds, and, and we are very encouraged by that and look forward to those discussions. Hopefully they'll, they'll happen soon. I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Davis tonight, and we're, we're planning to discuss this further, so looking forward to getting this resolved. I think we can come to a resolution that will work for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Clay?
Way back, it seems like it was about a year ago, Mr. Wright came to one of my town meetings, and this has certainly been quite an interesting process. I know everybody seems to think both sides are at odds. We all have, you know, things that we're trying to do. The city, from what I saw in this thing, because I did a lot of looking into it, I believe this is about the first time that the city's ever allowed anybody to build anything purposely on the city right of way. And, yeah, there were some legal things we were doing, but I think the posture of the city, from what I've seen, at least my feeling is, you know, we love the historic house. The district I represent has a lot of history, and I respect and appreciate, you know, history, and I understand you wanted to protect it. I think they were trying to find a mechanism where if it was, if the fence was built on the city right of way, liability, it's not like it's us against you. What the city folks were trying to do, and I had asked and nosed around on this thing, was protect liability or protect the interest of the taxpayers, but I don't want to go speak for the other council members, but everything I've heard and seen is that everybody would like to see something work out. The Kildare House is certainly a jewel in, in North Huntsville, and I'm glad to see people are talking. Hopefully it works, something gets worked out.
Jackie Reed.
Thanks for laying public input. The city needs to know before they- The city needs to know before they sign somebody, a deal, to let somebody, allow somebody to do something, in my opinion.
Reed, would you give us your address?
What I want?
Would you state your address for the record?
1008 Bob Wallace Avenue. I moved. Want everybody in town to know, I moved.
Hello, neighbor.
Anyway, let's go back. The fence has been chopped down, chopped half and two, and I'm so glad, and I hope you all work with these people, because if you allow them to do it, don't go back and take it away from them. I mean, please, we should be better and smarter than that. Anyway, I have several issues, and I hope I'm not too wild tonight. Thanks to the Traffic Engineering Department, because I was going through Pulaski Pike the other day, and they were paving it, and these little thin white stripes going down the road. Now, I can see pretty good, but I couldn't see those stripes, so I called the Traffic Engineering Department. She returned my call. This morning, I went down the other side of the street, wide, white, striping lanes. Thank you very, very much. That's what we want to see in this city. Don't waste money. We need an ordinance passed. The contractors will stripe those lines wide and white. We need to do that, in my opinion. Next, I'd like to say that the Holmes Avenue is growing up to a forest, in a forest over here. Don't let the forest take over over there. Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you. Holmes Avenue over here, where we're working, get that grass and those bushes cut, and don't let that grow up until it's wildened. Still, I have to go over and help you cut all that mess down. I mean, that's very, very interesting. I'd like for you to hold and explain fifteen G and H and on the obligation warrants that you're refinancing. I'd like to know if any new city money is going to be involved in that. If so, tell us how much. I know when you refinance sometime, you slip a few more dollars in there. And then I want to touch base on stone just a little, and I'm not getting involved too much tonight on stone. That's been a big, big issue. There's bigger issues than that come through here, I'm sure, and bigger deals than that, and this is not the first, and it won't be the last. Pass it, go ahead, give the school their money, let it go. Big Spring Cafes for it, the car lots for it, always Huntsville wants it, so. There's bigger deals than this has passed through here. Nobody's ever got their attention before, but I surely hope someday we can catch them all when they float through here. I want, my mother-in-law's going to have her 100th birthday next Saturday. I was going to ride my bike with the mayor. I bought a little pink bicycle, and I was going to ride with him at the thrift store, but my mother-in-law's 100th birthday is that day. I had to sell my bike. I won't be riding with you. Anyway, I look forward to that. I bought that bike so I could be upfront with you.
President, I ask that she be given an additional minute?
Oh. Anyway, there's an election, eight to 10 days from now, a citywide election. They think everybody thinks it's in November. Anyway, thank you for laying public input. I will be back. Thank you.
Bernice Burnett.
Good evening. My name is Bernice Burnett. My address is 2405 Green Hill Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. On behalf of our chairman, Mrs. Joy Parker, and the other seventeen members of the Huntsville Beautification Board, I would like to thank you for appointing us to the board and entrusting us to help keep Huntsville beautiful. We recently had our annual awards ceremony, and after reviewing over 450 properties, we awarded over 350 2014-2015 beautification signs. We also gave a number of special awards to individuals and properties for their special efforts to keep Huntsville beautiful. I want to specially thank Mayor Battle, Councilman Clean, and Councilman Oshewski, and Joy McKee, and the Green Team for attending our awards ceremony and helping to present the special awards. Again, thank you for appointing us, but we especially thank you for supporting us in our efforts to do what you appointed us to do. Thank you.
Earlier, we had comments from some citizens. Dr. Johnson raised an issue, the mayor's here now, that dealt with the fact that the city board mayor is breaking the letter of the federal mandate that was done back in Though he was not here when the remarks were made, but his remarks had to deal with the fact that M and M is not being followed as the decree has asked that it be done. In fact, the Board of Education is breaking the law. Would you respond to that?
I will say we will look at it and see what's happening, Dr. Showers. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the whole question.
John, did you pick up on that?
Dr. Showers, I heard the comments from the gentleman. I did not hear him say that they're breaking the law, and I don't think we have any information that will lead us to believe they're breaking the law. We can certainly have the city attorney talk to the school attorney and review their policies, but there's no evidence in front of us that indicates that the way in which they're managing that program is illegal, or they're breaking the intent of that court order.
And are we talking about the city school board?
The 1970 court order.
Yes, the M and M transfer of policy that is mandated in the decree. Dr. Johnson indicated to the public, he has a document, and he made reference to the language there that says that M to M should take place in the school district without caveats. And of course, Dr. Johnson, would you come back to the microphone for the mayor, who was not here, and give your reference to your concern?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presider. I was speaking with regard to the court order of 1970 regarding the M to M transfer, majority to minority transfer whereby these should be accepted and given priority with the placement in schools, where there are students in a majority ethnic school wanting to go to one where they would be a minority. What I stated was that a policy of the school board, number six dash, six-point-three-point-one, speaks about the majority-to-minority transfers. And what it says in essence is that when these transfers are more than the space allocation for a school, that they would be accomplished through a lottery system, which I oppose personally, because I don't think it's fair when you have a first-come, first-served basis that should be recognized, in my opinion. And then a lottery also gives opportunity for deception and special selection. And then also, when you consider the fact on the majority-to-minority, that there are, now, they have now gone in that same policy to an online registration. My concern is, what about our citizens who have children in school that wants their child to go from a majority to a minority school, but they are not competent nor designed to mess with computers? And so then, this segment, there's bound to be some loss. Now, I acknowledge the fact that they can go to the school for assistance, but at the same time, we seem to have not, we're not being as encompassing with this application of minority-to-majority as the ruling of 1970 has so stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. And I will say this, the school board is a duly-elected board. They are a duly-elected authority that operates under state law, and they operate their own meetings, their own way of doing business. If you have a problem with them, I would suggest that, you know, there are several different ways. If you think that there is a problem with the way that they are doing their majority-to-minority or minority-to-majority transfers, then, you know, there are several different avenues, and I think you know each one of those avenues. The city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville are not any of those duly-elected officials, though, that we have put in charge of our education system. And let me say, you know, our education system is a number-one priority that we all have to have. We have to have a good education system. We have to have a fair education system, and I think we're all in that same vein, looking for the same thing. I think I've been to two of the meetings where we've had, we prayerfully talked about education, and I think that one of the things that I've seen out of that is everybody's asking for the same thing out of the education system. They're asking for a good education system. They're asking for a fair education system. They're asking for our students to have the best education system that they can. I talked to a group today, and we started talking about the best of the education system, because our kids aren't out there just to compete with schools in Alabama. They're to compete with schools across America. They're competing with schools across the world. And if we don't have the best education system possible, we, as a community, will not continue to thrive and will not continue to prosper. So we have to make sure that our education system is the best. We have to make sure that it's fair. And that is what the elected officials of the school board, there's three of them up for election this cycle right now, and that is their job to do, and that's their job that they will have to fulfill, to do for our community.
John, Dr. T.C. Johnson makes several remarks. Would you care to respond to those?
Dr. Showers, he made reference to a couple incidents that I'm not at all familiar with. I'll have to go back and find out exactly what incidents he's referring to, because I have absolutely no knowledge of the incidents he's referring to, or when they occurred, or anything about them, so I'll have to find out about those.
Mayor, Dr. T.C. Johnson gave some remarks about a hiring practice in the police department. Also, he cited incidents that took place, one recently. And I know our chief is, is our chief here tonight? Chief Meyer's here tonight? The reason I called on John, because he was acting in your place when these remarks were made. Chief, did you hear those remarks that Dr. Johnson made?
Mr. Showers?
Yes.
It would be appropriate to address the police academy issue, but really, at this time, he made remarks about an alleged incident that might, might give rise to a claim or a lawsuit against the city, so it really would not be appropriate to discuss that.
Okay, that's fine. Chief, would you address the issue that he raised about the academy in terms of the hiring and placement of one academy where you have several clear efforts made to be more diverse, and then on another leadership, those numbers were tremendously reduced. Did you hear those remarks?
Yes, sir.
Could you respond?
Well, that all ties back to the recruiting efforts, not necessarily personnel that are assigned to the academy. The personnel that are assigned to the academy are the people that train the individuals once they're in the academy. The director of the academy is, has, one of the duties that they have is a process coordinator. The recruitment team for the police department stayed the same in the last, in the processes that he's referring to. And we have had a lot of meetings. We have a process underway now. Before we instituted this process, we were very much aware of that, and we modified our process and took special effort to do better, to be more diverse in our recruitment efforts. And I believe we, I don't know the exact numbers, but we have a good pool of applicants which fuse from, for our academy that'll start March 2nd of 2015.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the attorney if he would respond to the gentleman who made inquiry about the fact of not being allowed to serve in the Research Park area.
Dr. Showers, actually, I jumped in because I actually hosted a meeting with members of the planning staff this week. They are already in the process of developing some recommended changes to the food truck ordinance that would come to council for approval. I also met with the CRP board Monday afternoon, and specifically authorizing food trucks and the conditions under which that would occur was part of the discussion, would be included in future decisions by the council. They aren't, they don't make the decision, but they provide a recommendation that ultimately council would consider. So we're already in the process of drafting the changes that he recommended, and I think that we have agreement that there's a way that we can get to exactly what the employees, as well as the companies in CRP, would like to have specific to that piece. The changes we're also considering would affect, to a slight extent, some of the downtown food truck. Those are two separate issues, two separate ordinances, but we're looking at both of them simultaneously, and I would expect council to see that within the next few months.
Okay. Thank you very much. Back to the attorney. When Mr. Wright spoke to us, he indicated that they was providing protection for the city. Would you respond to the liability of him having a personal policy that would release the city from liability?
Well, I have two responses. That is one of the items that was in the draft agreement at the time that he pulled away from negotiations. It did offer to indemnify the city up, it was a $500,000 indemnification or insurance policy commitment. The city's statutory cap is $100,000 under state law, state tort claims for any, one claim, or $300,000 for any particular occurrence. And if there were an automobile accident or somebody got hurt, that would fall under the nature of a state claim, so it would be covered by the type of policy that he's talking about. There's no guarantee that that policy would remain in effect after the fence was erected. I mean, he could continue to keep it in place, he could cancel it, and then it would be incumbent upon the city at that time to decide what to do about that. But it is part, it was part of the negotiations at the time, and it is helpful to have it in there.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed raised an issue about Holmes Avenue. I had a couple calls today myself. Is Joy here tonight? Is Mr. Huntsville here? Oh, she is here? Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Reed raised some concerns about the condition of Holmes Avenue and the grass and trees and limbs that's there. Is that an area that your department can look into?
Yes, we'll be happy to, but that is not actually city property or city right-of-way. That's owned by the railroad.
Okay.
I'll be happy to contact them. I have contacted them in the past.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Board appointments, we have no items from the utilities tonight, so we'll move to board appointments. A resolution to appoint John Bruback to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, who are term to expire July 26, 2020, nominated July 24, 2014. Mr. Clean?
Mr. President, I would so move for the appointment.
Chair, seconds. Any other discussion on that item? Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying "I" opposes no. That appointment has been approved. Resolution to reappoint Willie Love to the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, Place Two, who are term to expire August 25, 2018. He was nominated July 24 at a regular council meeting. The chair will move for the approval. It's been moved and properly second that Mr. Willie Love will be... It's been moved and properly second that Mr. Willie Love will be reappointed to the Human Relations Commission. Those that support that motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. Are there any nominations from anyone tonight? For the record, I would like to nominate Nathaniel Hudson to the Community Development Committee. Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? Approval of expenditures. A resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, I move for payment of the vouchers, the amount of $14,749,461.59.
It's been moved and properly second to authorize the expenditures for payments. Those that support that motion, which you indicate by saying aye, poses no. Resolution has passed. Mr. Kane?
Mr. President, I'd like to call on Randy Taylor, the city finance director, to give us a report.
Council members, I can give you a revenue report, a sales tax report for the month of July. The finance committee has received that. We were down in July about 1% compared to the previous year. So that drug our year-to-date number down to 1.9%. You'll recall that we want to be at 3% for budget purposes. It's better than we were at mid-year, so that's still positive. But we have seen, it just emphasizes how quickly things can change in just one month. We were at 2.3% last month, now we're at 1.9%. So that's the only revenue figure I have that I can give to you. We are working on the mayor's budget proposal, which the council will be receiving in the next several weeks. And I do have a report on the city's debt refinancing, but we can postpone that until the action item on the agenda, which is 15Q.
Mr. Taylor, I guess just for correction, I don't know if it came out the right way. So at this point, we are ahead of the budget, of last year's budget, 1.9%.
We are ahead of last year's revenue, 1.9%.
Only 1.9%, but we had budgeted 3%. So we're ahead, but just not ahead as much as we want to be.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could call on Chief Morris. Chief Morris has some appointments to make to the Huntsville Police Citizens Police Advisory Council. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. As chief, I have two appointments to the Huntsville Police Citizens Advisory Council. And I would like to reappoint or submit for reappointment Reverend Wayne Snodgrass and Mr. John Reitzel for a reappointment.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'd also like to say while we're talking about the police advisory council, it was a sad heart that we mentioned that Crawford Howard, who was my appointee on that, died today. And his, we asked that everybody in the city, thoughts and prayers, go with Howard Crawford's family. Howard was a, Crawford Howard, I'm sorry. Crawford Howard was a significant volunteer for the city of Huntsville. He gave countless hours to us. He headed up the planning commission for a number of years for the city of Huntsville and was somebody that you could really count on. And he served with honor and distinction on the police advisory commission as one of my appointees. So if everybody would keep him in thoughts and prayers. This past week, past two weeks, we've been through Armed Forces Week last week and honored all those who have served and, and served us and also those who work at Redstone Arsenal and are part of our community, something very important for us. And as part of Armed Forces Week, we have brought community in Redstone together, both Madison, Madison County and the city of Huntsville. And it's part of that partnership that we call Team Redstone. And that this, bringing this group together is a great way to honor them and for all of us to, to work together for some common goals that happened at Redstone Arsenal. Also, I think we, we will be talking later tonight about the, the bond, the bond buyback. We are buying back a number of dollars worth of bonds this time and, and we are going to be able to save the city about $7 million. A very significant amount of money that we're going to be able to save by rebuying bonds at a lower, lower interest rate than what they are today. And we're not extending the, the term of those bonds. So that they will still end up terminating at the proper time. I want to thank Mr. Taylor, Mr. Dots, but most importantly, I want to thank the council because if we didn't have a council who was very conservative and very, made sure that we spent the money in the right way, we would not have the AAA rating and we would not have that chance for that kind of savings to come across for the city. So to each of the council members, I say thank you for, for your work that you've done on the budget and what you do to make sure that we, we spend our money in the proper way. Also, this, this past week, this week, we've just finished up with the Space and Missile Defense Conference. We've had thousands of people from all across the United States who have come to the city of Huntsville. They've gotten to see what the city of Huntsville does. They've gotten to see the technology developed here. They've gotten to see that they need to be a part of this city. And this was been a, a great conference that, that has touched a lot of people in the space of missile defense industry, in the aerospace industry. Last weekend, I think everybody on council and the mayor's office were kept busy on both all-day Saturday, going to back-to-school events. We had back-to-school events in the north part of town, the south part of town, the east part of town, west part of town. And we kind of started off at about 7:00 in the morning and ended up about 6:00 at night with, with, with events. And Kenny Anderson, head of our multicultural affairs office, did a great event up at Johnson. Thank you, Kenny. Great job. And we celebrated going back to school because that going back to school is something very important for our community. We want our children to be excited. We want them to value their education. We want them to think of their education as the way that they better this community. So we were very excited to have that. And, Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Wolkover?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor and a privilege for me to have a young lady that, who is more compassionately referred to as one of our mentees, Cheryl Dublin. And Cheryl has some good information that she wants to share with us. Mr. President, if I could defer to her for a few minutes, please.
Hi. It's great to see you all again. I'm actually leaving Huntsville tonight to start the next stage of my life in DC to begin law school. And I wanted to make sure I came here tonight to thank you guys, each one of you individually, for the impact that you all have had on my life. For about a year that I would come up here to the council meetings, it really has helped my career. I like to say I started my career at 17, 17 here. And I wouldn't have gotten to the point where I am had I not experienced these Thursdays here and learned what I can do here as a councilwoman, hopefully in another city or perhaps even in Huntsville. I don't know my future. So I wanted to make sure I, I addressed you all and let you guys know that you've definitely impacted my life. It's, it's a privilege and an honor to be a Huntsville resident and a Huntsville-born resident. I'm going to DC, the capital city of the nation. However, Huntsville, the city of Huntsville will always have my heart. It was a great place to start my career and to get experience in this city. It was a privilege to intern in the mayor's office under the former head of the Department of Multicultural Affairs and especially to be mentored by Councilman Wolkover. So I wanted to give you guys a proper farewell. And actually, I delayed my travel a couple hours so I could come here and, and personally say goodbye and thank you so much.
And thank you, Ms. Dublin, and we certainly wish you well. And sometimes when we're in DC, Mayor will look her up and say hello and take her out to dinner. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think our loss is going to be Congress's gain.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Kane?
Mr. President, I just want to announce I'll be holding my monthly town meeting this Monday night, the 18th, 7:00 PM at Huntsville Library, Public Library, Meeting Room A. Everyone's invited. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Councilman John O'Shea.
I do a lot of this, but I just want to continue to thank the mayor's staff. And I could just go through a few things. It's been three weeks now, really, if you think about it, for city council meetings. So there's been a lot going on. And I, I just can't, it's just wonderful to be able to call guys like Hatfield and Brother Benyon and Keith Ashley and, and John Hamilton and Shane Cook when, hey, man, I need some information on some stuff. And then Shane Davis spent an hour with, I mean Shane Cook spent an hour with me today talking about some sewage issues. And his staff is great. They're responsive and they do good work. And I just want to continue to thank the leadership for all the great work they have, they have done. And that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
I too. As the mayor spoke earlier, I was busy this weekend with the back-to-school parades. We also attended out at the Aviation Challenge, the F-16 Redtail Dedication Ceremony, where the Tuskegee Airmen's were honored and recognized at that occasion. I went from there over to the Shower Center, to a carnival there, where books and food and school supplies were issued. And that event was sponsored by the United Motorcycle and Social Clubs of Huntsville. And I went also finally over to Johnson High School to the First Annual North Huntsville Community Festival that was led by our own Kenny Anderson and several others. I was delighted to see the things that they had going on at the school over there on last Saturday. I also had a chance to visit this week at Johnson High School. I went by, met the principal there and also had a chance to join, my wife and I, the Johnson High School PTA. I want to congratulate Dr. C.M. Johnson on his 20th Pastorial Anniversary that was held last week. Congratulations, Doctor. I also attended a town meeting at Alabama A&amp;M University that was sponsored by our representative, Representative Laura Hall. And the discussion was about securities. On August 16, at Alabama A&amp;M, at the Lewis Cruz Stadium, we're having our Fan Day. It will be at 3 o'clock. All alums and friends are invited to attend. On August 22nd through the 24th, Council Training School will have its school reunion. On Friday night, they're going to have the Class Night. And that'll be at the Marriott. On Saturday, beginning at 9 o'clock, brunch, and that would be at the North Hall. And of course, that night, the Council Training School banquet will be held. And that also will be in the North Hall. For more information about the reunion, you can contact Betty Ann Thompson On Holmes Avenue, Ms. Reed mentioned earlier, there is a General Dollar Store there that's next to Fletcher Selden's building. Is Mr. Kramer in town? Okay. Thank you. Could you have your division to look at putting a cross in indicator at that site? A lot of the citizens who lives in Sparkman Home and on the south side of Holmes Avenue are crossing at that store, the general store, the General Dollar Store. And citizens have called and asked if we might be able to put a cross and indicator at that particular site for safety. I was told there was a mother who was crossing with the baby and scroller. And, and her rush to try to miss being hit, the baby fell out of the scroller. So if we might look at whether or not we might be able to assist in that way, I would appreciate so very much. Is Earl Jordan here tonight? Thank you, sir. Is Earl Jordan here tonight? And Mr. Gatewood, is he here tonight? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gatewood. Mr. Jordan lives in the Flemington Estates. Called several times last week about an issue in that neighborhood caused bad. And I want him to know, if he's listening tonight, that that issue has been taken care of. The property owner has been cited and we should see some relief very soon from that effort. Our next item on the agenda is unfinished business items for action. We have none. New business items for introduction. There are none tonight. And we have, did somebody say something? Item 15, new business items for consideration. Let me ask you if you would to note 15Z, 15P, 15Q, and 15T. Are there other items you want to have held?
Mr. President, I'd like to hold item OO.
15 double O. 15 double O. 15A, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek a forfeiture of surety bond issued by Plate River Insurance Company. B, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the lawsuit of Rodney Yarborough versus City of Huntsville and George Donald Jones III. Three, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the claim to T. Reed Timmons. D, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Homegrown LLC for the Big Spring Crush Event. E, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Leadership Huntsville Madison County, Inc. for the Mercury Rising Chili Festival. F, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a modification to the agency agreement between the City of Huntsville and North Alabama African-American Chamber of Commerce. G, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Huntsville and RCP Merchandise Walk LLC. H, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute Modification Number 16 to Supplemental Development Agreement, TIF 5 Series 2010A, between the City of Huntsville and LW Redstone LLC. I, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke BB and T Bank Letter of Credit Number 96415591370003 for Pulaski Corner Subdivision. J, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost reimbursement agreement with Northeast Alabama Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $3,500 for traffic duties. K, request for authorization to advertise and fill five vacant equipment operator one positions in public works services. J, L, ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 12-768 by changing appropriated funding within various departments and funds. M, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donation. M, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. N, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the low bidder meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. O, a resolution authorizing the City of Huntsville to participate in the Municipal Emergency Service Purchasing Agreement. P, a resolution authorizing the adoption of the one-time lump sum payment to the city retirees pursuant to Section 2 of Act 429 of the Regular Session of the 2014 Legislature. S, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a plat entitled, Parkside Town Center, a re-subdivision of Unit 1, 2, 3, and 4, a re-subdivision of Resource Center of Research Park, a condominium as recorded in document number 20111017000552090. Also, a re-subdivision of Lot 1 of a re-subdivision of Lot 6 of the re-subdivision of Lot 5, Thornton Research Park, a re-subdivision of Lots 3 and 4 of the re-subdivision of partial A, B, and C, Norfolk Southern Industrial Park, recorded in plat book 41, page 84, in the office of the Judge of Probate of Madison County, Alabama, and also Lot 1 of the Bridges and Research Park, page 2, a re-subdivision of Lot 2 of Bridges and Research Park, Lot 2, according to the map of our plat survey of Research Park, Lake Fire, Page 3, a re-subdivision. U, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the plat entitled, Mark C. Smith Drive, subdivision, page 2, a re-subdivision of Lots 1 and 2 of Mark C. Smith Drive subdivision as recorded in document number 20131, 2020007577220. V, a resolution authorizing travel for the Huntsville Fire and Rescue. W, a resolution authorizing agreement with State of Alabama Department of Transportation for installation and or maintenance of traffic control signals at the intersection of Alabama 2 US 72 at East Watercrest Boulevard, BND. X, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the low bidder, Mark Johnson Construction LLC, for Goose Creek Sewer Pump Station, project number 66-07SM01. Y, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the low bidder, Y Grass Construction Company, Inc., for downtown Gateway, doing business as Harbor Road Extension, REVID, base bid, project number 65-11-RD03. AA, 15AA, resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Miller &amp; Miller, Inc., for Gateway-Greenway, page 2, base bid and option number 1, option number 2, option number 3, option number 4A, and option number 5, project 65-13-WPO1, by change order number 1. BB, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Garber LLC for Engineering and Construction Administration Services for Goose Creek Sewer Pump Station, project number 6507SM01. 15CC, resolution authorizing the mayor to modify the agreement with Croy Engineering, LLC, for engineering design services for Gateway-Greenway, page 3, parking lot, project number 65-14WPO1, by modification number 1. 15DD, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Trice PC for Engineering Design Services for Bob Wallace Avenue Merchant Walk Drainage Improvement, project number 6514DR04. 15EE, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Garber LLC for Engineering Survey and Stormwater Monitoring Services for Redstone Gateway, project number 15EF, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with LBYD, Inc., for Engineering and Construction Administration Services for Redstone Gateway, Phase 1 Infrastructure, A&amp;M Permit, termination, project number 6514SP47. 15G, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with LBYD, Inc., for Engineering and Construction Administration Services for Redstone Gateway, Phase 1 Infrastructure, project number 6508SP31. 15H, a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Miller &amp; Miller, Inc., for Holmes Avenue and Washington Street Steep Escape Improvement, project number 6512SP31, by change order number 2. 15I, a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Recontracting Services, Inc., for WPC Sanctuary Sanitary Sewer Relocation, County Line Road, and I-565, project number 6512, SM01, and ALDOT, project number LM1565307, by change order number 1. 15J, a resolution authorizing the renewal of the contract for part-time Judge Scott Rogers. 15L, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to renew the agreement between Brentwood Service Administrators, Inc., for Workers' Compensation Claims Administration and Loss Control Service. 15M, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an application to stop-loss insurance with HCC Life Insurance Company for the purpose of renewing stop-loss insurance coverage for the city's group health plan. 15N, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a consultant agreement between the City of Huntsville and Carol English. Would not ask that we would approve 15A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, S, U, V, W, X, Y, AA, AB, AC, CD, DE, EG, 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 EG,[1189.51]
Improvement warrants, series 2014 dash C. Motion?
So moved.
Chair will second it. It's been moved in property second discussion. Mr. Taylor.
Council members, this is the item I referred to a moment ago in the Finance Committee report, and also you've heard about it for several weeks. We reported it at the last two council meetings that we were considering doing a refinancing of some of the city's debt. I've advised you by way of email in the past several days that this was going to be the week that we should do that because of the where interest rates were in the market. When I reported to you three weeks ago, we thought that the savings to the city might have been about $3.6 million and would we would have issued about $60 million worth of debt. Interest rates have dropped over this last three weeks, and what we put in the marketplace on Wednesday and today was $100,500,000 of refinancing warrants, which will produce a savings for the city of $7.2 million. Much of the savings is realized in the form of reduced debt service payments over the remaining life of the debt. Some of it will be realized to us in cash at the front end. But the we have a debt policy which requires us to achieve a certain amount of savings as a percentage when we do a refinancing like this, and that percentage is 4%, unless it's some very special circumstances. It must save at least 4% of the principal that we refinance. This deal collectively will refinance, will produce a 7.3% savings for the city. And again, that's because interest rates, where they are and the decrease that we've seen in the past several weeks. So that's what's before you is an agreement for our underwriters, which is the same team that you have seen in the past. That's Raymond James, Morgan Stanley, Securities Capital, and Joe Jolly and Associates. So those underwriters are the ones who will actually sell the city's debt. They will buy it from us and then sell it in the marketplace. So the pricing yesterday and today, as I notified you by email, was very favorable. How we know that we've got very competitive rates on the deal is by comparing it to other issuers that are similar to us, best that we can determine, and I'll give you a word about that in just a moment. But there are questions sometimes about what does it cost for us to do this? The city will pay $717,378.91 to issue this debt, and if you compare that to the $7.2 million in savings, the business case for that is clear. It actually is three different issues that affect the city, affect the city schools, and affect some of the public building authority debt that the city will now be taking on, and then the public building authority payments will decrease. So that is the details of the transaction. I do want to call on Mr. Phil Dotz. He's our financial advisor. This has been quite a complicated deal for a variety of reasons, but he'll speak to some of the issues that I spoke to and also just the comparisons so that you know how we well we performed.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and good evening. I'm Phil Dotz. I'm with Public Financial Management. We're a financial advisor to the city. This has been an interesting process, and as Mr. Taylor says, for a complicated refunding. It's 100% refunding for all practical purposes. You know, when the year started, we really didn't see many refundings, refunding opportunities. We thought we might pick some up when the city did its capital improvement plan increment later in the year, but as the year went on, rates surprised everybody, including us. And so we decided to move forward aggressively to be ready to do a refunding. So this is the result of that. The when we looked at the pricing comparable pricings, we looked at the University of Alabama, the state of Minnesota, Suffolk, Virginia, San Antonio, Tuscaloosa, Pelham, which is a new AAA, by the way, in the state of Alabama, Louisville Water, which is also a AAA, and Montgomery County, Alabama, and we either were through those rates at better spreads or we were comparable with places like the state of Minnesota and, well, San Antonio, Texas. So it's a very good transaction. The Finance Department was well-prepared as we moved along with this process and identified the opportunities. And so I think directors, you know, some of the results are directly related to the speed we were able to get the transaction ready to go to market. Be glad to answer any questions.
Council members?
I'd just like to piggyback on that and say thank you, Mr. Dotz, for your work. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your work. And the only reason that you were able to get these kind of rates is because of the job that y'all have done in financial management and passing budgets that are clearly are balanced budgets. And I want to say thank you to the council because the council is a big part of this. If you didn't pass it, it never would have happened, so thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
I don't have any further comments unless there's questions from the council.
Those that support the motion to approve this item, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no, this item has passed.
Mr. President.
I'm a little ahead of myself.
Oh, I'm just going to remind you that no action was taken on P. I didn't know if you remember that or not.
Just going back to item P. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Resolution authorizing the adoption of one-time lump sum payment to city retirees pursuant to section two of Act 429 of the regular session of the 2014 legislature.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in property second that this item would be approved. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kling?
Well, I kind of misspoke a few minutes ago. This thing passes, which I hope it is, and it's I think it's certainly something we all want to see happen. There would not be any other amendment needed at the budget. This would actually be the final action that we would need to take, and certainly I would encourage all council members to support it and commend the administration for bringing this up.
Mr. Cover.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I do support this in terms of, in theory, I think our city retirees deserve a raise, but after speaking with the Ethics Commission, I'm going to completely abstain from voting on this item and retract any discussion that I have had. I think, Mayor, it was just a brief discussion without any specificities or details. So I'm going to completely recuse myself on this one because I am a City of Huntsville retiree as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other comments?
Mr. President, if I could get, we were authorized by the legislature to do this this past year. The legislature authorized us to do it. As they didn't provide any money along with it, but they did authorize us to do it. But Mr. Taylor has been looking at this, and if you would like to go through some of the details of this very quickly so everybody can understand what it's about.
Yes, sir. The legislature, of course, requires the city council to adopt it. That's why you have the resolution. The they know what the payment will be to the retirees when they make the payment in October, and that number is about $598,000. They gave us another option, which is to pay it a year from now in fiscal year FY16, and that figure would have been about $650,000 because it would have been a percentage of our payroll then. It's in the city's best interest to pay it now because that we're not going to save $50,000 in interest by waiting. Plus, as Councilman Kling noted, that it eliminates the item from any concerns related to future budgets. So the city has reserved this within the surplus from last year, and so that's where the $598,000 will come from. That's what the mayor's recommending. You've already approved the budget action for that in 15L. So that's how the money works.
And how much is it per employee per year?
$24, I believe, per retiree per year of service.
Okay.
Many of those retirees, Mr. Chairman, as you know, had retired 20 years ago, and their salary, this position that might be paying $35,000 a year now, 20 years ago would have been paying about half of that. And then the retirement's actually a percentage of that. So many of these retirees, and I've had a chance to meet some of them, they're talking about getting retirement, an annual retirement that's well under $10,000 a year. And unfortunately, folks, as we've heard, have to make choices between prescription drugs and food. So it's a one-time situation that's authorized by the legislature, but it will provide, you know, some assistance to very, very deserving employees who had, I guess, helped base the foundation that made Huntsville what it is today.
Other comments? Did we carry that motion? Those that support that motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no? For the record, Councilman Cover abstained. Fifteen T. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a website hosting and support agreement between the City of Huntsville and Red Sage Communication, Inc., for web hosting for the bike Huntsville.com.
Ms. Dotz Showers, we have Mr. Madston here, our long-range urban planner, to talk about this, and as I understand, this is a $300 contract. Is that right?
Yes, it's $300. Basically, the website was set up as part of a program that came through a federal cars grant for bicycle education. The website, as it was developed through that grant, had a good amount of information on it that's still applicable. Before we transitioned it into the city website, which, as I understand, is still being developed, we wanted to make sure it was maintained. So basically, this $300 fee is being paid to Red Sage to continue to host it until such time as we can transfer it to the city website.
And Mr. Madison, will it mention the mayor's bike ride on August 23rd?
It because we still have control of it, it absolutely will.
Thank you.
Other comments, motion please.
So moved.
Chair will second this item. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye? Poses no, that item has passed. Item Z. A resolution authorizing the mayor to modify the agreement Barge Wagner Summer and Cannon, Inc., for Huntsville Northern Bypass from 1.2 mile east of Pulaski Pike to U.S. Highway 431, project number 6510, RD08, by modification number two. The chair moves to approve? It has been moved in property second that this item will be approved. Ms.
Kathy Martin?
Martin.
Our planner. Ms. Martin.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Engineer.
Yes, sir.
Engineering. I'll get it right after while. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. This is a modification with Barge Wagner Summer and Cannon to do additional design services along North Parkway to assist with the taper lanes as a result of the environmental assessment. And the contract value, sir, is $81,143.
Is there a timetable for this particular work?
Yes, sir. The plans are about 60% complete. There's about 100 parcels to be acquired, so it'll be about two years. So we're anticipating construction mid-2017.
Other question from council? Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no, that item has passed. Thank you. League of Department Items Transaction.
Mr. President?
Oh, I've got some more. Okay, thank you. Resolution out as fifteen double K.
Mr. President, I would so move for passage of fifteen double K.
A second. Discussion. A resolution authorizing the contract for Court Referral Office Program with Administrative Office of Courts. Judge?
Someone want that held? I didn't.
Would you tell us what that's about?
Yes, sir. That's our that's our yearly contract with AOC, the Administrative Office of Court. It authorizes our court referral program and court referral officers in municipal court.
Question from council members? Thank you, sir. Those that support that motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no, that item has passed. Fifteen double O. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Huntsville City Board of Education for the purchase of each of the most 4.0 acres of remaining stone middle school campus.
So moved.
Chair will second that item. Discussion.
Council members, what you have before you is a real estate agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Huntsville City Board of Education to purchase four acres for the stone middle school redevelopment project. Should you approve this, the city's intent for this four acres is to create a public parking area and then a green plaza just for public imprompt gathering for the compatibility with the proposed Yellow Hammer Brewery and the redevelopment stone middle, which will be straight to L.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kling?
Mr. Davis, I've seen plans, I've heard, there's been talk, there's going to be an amphitheater there, there's going to be a gazebo, different things are being proposed. What exactly is going to go on the park?
Councilman Kling, with the initial phase, we're going to put about $50,000 worth of construction on the four acres, which is mainly the parking. The two acres for what is being called an amphitheater is more of just a grass plaza area. It will not have stadium-type seating that some of the public has thought we would be putting in. We're limiting our investment. All other investment will be private on either side of the public property. And as it redevelops and see what kind of energy that comes over the years, you know, we may modify that plan. But the first phase is to put as minimal investment as possible to the city, and that's mainly the the public parking area. And then the festival amphitheater would just be a grass plaza.
There, as you know, there's a large amount of residential area nearby, low mill, holiday homes, and West Lawn, and I just want to kind of wave a flag. I know I'd had some contact with Danny Shane, I don't know if he's here, but I noticed there are guidelines as far as late-night entertainment issues that come up. I know we had a similar issue with a a club that was located on, I guess, off of Meridian Street that wanted to have, you know, outside entertainment. And I just want to wave a flag that as we go through the process, you know, do this in a way that's going to be neighborhood-friendly for the residents. I think you've got a great concept, and, you know, I just want to wave a flag about that, you know, that we don't want the residents to be bombed out with loud noise.
Yes, sir. It would have to comply with that. And I think what are more intent for the city portion design and the integration of the redevelopment of that area is more of kind of like the concert and park kind of the events that we have that, you know, the noise level is more low-level acoustical-type entertainment.
I remember we had this discussion. It was the furniture factory that I was thinking of, and there was concern from, you know, residential areas nearby, and everything worked out very well on that. And, you know, the furniture factory has live entertainment, and we feedback we've received from neighborhood folks has been that everything's fine, no issue, no problem.
It should be very similar up here at Stone Middle. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members? Here are none. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. Vacation of easements, ordinance authorizing the vacation of a utility and drainage easement between lots 13 and 14, Little Mountain subdivision, phase one.
So move for consolidation and approval?
Second. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. There are no vacationer right-ofways, no deeds for acceptance, routine bond solidifications, none, liquor bond mortgages, none. Will not hear from none roster communication from the public.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mayor Battle, the council, and the city staff, I would like to say, Mayor Battle, I do agree with you about we all want the best education for our children. In fact, that is why the 1970 court order states what it does about the M2M transfer. What my appeal to you and this council concerns is not your direct supervision of the school board, but you as a governance body under which the school board comes. And so then I just appeal to your conscience to consider this court order in light of policies that have been written and projected to be followed, which is the policy number 6.3.1 of the Huntsville City School Board policy. The other item is that I agree that with transparency, there may be may well be a reduction of confusion. But as long as there's crime prevention initiatives going on in one part of the city, and a crime is definitely and more deadly most higher than the other part of the city with no notice, then it gives a sense of aloneness to the residents of the north. So maybe transparency may help. I realize that you cannot put out certain information about certain offices and operations, but some kind of sense. With the article, Mr. Hamilton, the article was written in Huntsville City Council, and it also has in it an officer speaking on behalf of it, of which Chief Marsh had made a comment as well. So it's not that it was not something that just came out of a spoof situation. This is something that is acknowledging and recognizing some definitely good police work, but that no statement, consequence, or indication for like-manner initiatives in the north.
Mr. Cox?
Jerry Cox, 40, 29, tail star circle. Excuse me. Mr. President, as a veteran of the United States Army, tonight I wish to respectfully acknowledge the five U.S. Army soldiers killed in combat in Afghanistan since our last meeting, saddened by the fact that last meeting I was able to report none. These five United States Army soldiers includes a 19-year-old, a 20-year-old, and a major general assassinated by insider fire. Mr. President, at the last meeting, I was honored to have the opportunity on behalf of the Huntsville chapter of the retired federal employees to present to the council a resolution of the chapter of NORF supporting the bonus for the city retirees, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for passing that resolution or passing that ordinance. Again, Mr. President, Russia has removed itself outside the family of nations. They granted Snowden asylum after he did great damage to our national security. That should have been strike one. Given the incident recently in the Ukraine, where it is almost certain that a Russian missile shot down an airliner with tremendous loss of life, some 80 children falling from the sky from 30,000 feet, strike two. Now Putin is retaliating against the United States by banning food imports, starting a trade war. We should ask the Mississippi chicken farmer, who has lost a source of providing a business for his chicken farm, if this culture should be honored by a United States city, as I did last time. Again, I ask the City of Huntsville to remove from the display out in this out in the front here the recognition of Russia.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dwight Wright, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Showers, for seeking clarification on the liability and the insurance issue concerning the fence at Keldare. It had been my assumption and understanding that the modifications to the license agreement would make the make the continuance of that insurance policy a requirement. And I'm sure as we continue these discussions and work it out, we'll be able to identify language which would which would clarify that and find a way to make that necessary so that the city will be able to verify that that insurance policy is in good standing and continues throughout the the life of the agreement. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Gatewood?
Gatewood, 4703 Ardmore Drive. Echoing the comments of Pastor Here in reference to the minority-to-majority transfer, you know, the desegregation order that was ordered 44 years ago, just.
Start off with your name and address, Mr. Gatewood.
James, Gatewood, 4703 Ardmore Drive. Just echoing the comments of Pastor Here in reference to the minority-to-majority order. I have recently applied my child for that same transfer position, bid everything by the by the book and by the way, the online transfer is stated to, even provided proof that I've took every step that needed to be taken via screenshot and pictures and such. However, I was denied that same transfer even though the proof shows the acceptance order that that was the steps I've taken. I've worked at Information Services for 14 years at Adtran. I was told that there was no that they did not see any tracks or files that I made this exception, but I was told that in a matter of minutes versus I know for a fact that it takes quite a long quite a deal of a long time to just say that you did not see any kind of logs that stated that I made this transfer or not. I felt that I was wrongly denied for this transfer. I strongly suggest that or strongly would just ask the council for assistance with this. Like I said, I provided proof and feel that this order should be should be looked at again as far as the process it should be handled. I know it's all via online now and no longer it's no longer paper. I know that you can go down to downtown Huntsville and actually go to the the center and actually go online to help you with that as well. However, I just feel that if we can get a better way of tracking that for acceptance, it'd be better much appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, you in position to address that with the board with the superintendent?
Let me figure out what what he's looking to do and be glad to pass that along. I think Ms. Robinson's here so she can, if you understand what we're looking for, if you could help us too. We'll have some conversations. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Reed?
I just have two or three small concerns. I understand the railroad authority has asked one of our employees to leave the property. Mayor Battle, I'd like for you to see if you can contact the railroad authority about this property over here. It's going to take some power, it looks like, to get some attention over there. And if you need some help, I know where you can get it. Anyway, always at the Donald General over there where you're talking about, you want that walkway, the grass next door to that property, who owns that, it's about to overtake the building on the other side of it. So, I mean, I don't know how these property owners can get away with high grass when the residential people have to keep their grass mowed. Property owners need looking into. Bob Wallace Avenue, as you come down Bob Wallace and cross Whitesburg and go on to California, there's a racetrack going on over there, and they come off of Whitesburg and turn that corner there, I think we're on a racecar track. I wish somebody would look into that day and night, how fast. In fact, two cars has landed in this woman's house next door there on the corner of Bob Wallace. They crossing Whitesburg, trying to get on to California, and they turn in that curve, they've gone in her yard, and they come around the corner off of Whitesburg on California. I think they're doing 60 miles an hour. Somebody go over there and please check it out sometime. And also, I just want to ask the question about this amphitheater. It's not going to be an amphitheater at Stone School. That's not going to happen. That's what the news has been saying. Anyway, the way I I'm out of this again, but I got to ask some questions. Where are we getting the $500,000 to put the Greenway in? I understand now it's not amphitheater. It's going to be a brewer for the brewery, and we're going to have a park with the stages out there for bands, and people sit out there and drink beer. Is that what it's going to turn out to be? We're building a parking lot for all of that. I'm for always Huntsville. Wait, don't get me wrong. The rescue mission brought 3.5 million, and this is only bringing 1 million, but the school. But the school needs the money, so send it on over there. They need it. I mean, I'm not trying to stop this deal. A deal's a deal. Go ahead and pass it. You done passed it, I'm glad. But the mission brought 3.5 million. Gary Reynolds went off at 4.8 million. We have got to make something work in Old West Huntsville. If you need a guard dog, we're gonna have to guard our money closer than what we've been guarding it. That's all I have to say. Yes or no on an amphitheater, is all I'm asking. So the news can stop calling it that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Clain?
Since, I didn't know my time went that fast. Is there an estimate that somebody can give as far as what the payback will be to the city? Because I think similar to what's been done with Twickenham Square, Cabello's, and some of these other developments, we put a little initial investment in, but property tax, sales tax on building materials, is there any, has anybody done the estimate on what the payback will be to the city, new tax revenues? Mr. Davis?
Naturally, Councilman Clain, just, everything is preliminary based on the amount of rehabilitation and interest that Stone will get, plus the 6,000 square feet of brand-new construction with Yellowhammer. You know, one of the most positive impacts is that property's not been on the tax rolls. It's a significant piece of property in the downtown core that will start immediately paying taxes as soon as they close on it. And I know the, I think the straight to, I mean, the Yellowhammer, their budget is between a half and $700,000 new construction, and then about a million and a half dollars for Stone. So our payback is less than about 18 months, time you count property tax and some construction tax, not to mention the sales tax. There's already been interest in a restaurant. If you wanna really look at, challenge the council to look at some, if you wanna really get a vision of what this could become. Colorado Springs, Colorado, is a city we compete with on a daily basis with a lot of the high-tech industry. They have done the exact same thing with a middle school, and it's wildly popular in Colorado Springs. It's called iviewildschool.com. There's a bakery, there's a farmer's market, there's office buildings in there, there is a brewery, sandwich shops, and Stone is actually larger facility than what Colorado Springs has turned into, something that has become just really wildly successful for the city.
Well, I know that residents in that area have been concerned about empty school buildings, and about three weeks ago, West Huntsville Elementary School was sold, and the folks at Low Mill are happy it's gonna be kind of like a high-tech incubator. And I think this will be much better than being an empty deserted building, and I'm glad to see some use coming from it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, as you go back, I just want to say on behalf of a section of town that is in their need of similar opportunities. We got vacant buildings in the north, on the east side of the Parkway, the west side of the Parkway, building there at Oakwood and the Parkway that's been sitting, and some other buildings. And we, too, would certainly like to see some movement of those buildings, those empty buildings.
Yes, sir. And we're working very, very hard, and I think we're about 30 days away to be announcing something special to one of those buildings.
Let's see.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Kenneth Gibson, 2122 Gladstone Drive, and I just wanna congratulate the retirees for the action that the mayor and the city council has done tonight for some 1,000 retired employees. Thank you very much.
When I came here tonight, early tonight, there were five women, and I'm looking at them now. Are you with some group? Do you like to speak on behalf of your group? They have sat from start to finish.
Mr. President, Councilman Showers, the individuals you see on this row here, and a couple of us that were here and have gone on, they're part of the North Huntsville Social Justice Committee, which is concerned about justice throughout the city itself. It launches from North Huntsville, but we're concerned about equality, equity, and the distribution of resources, et cetera. Things such as you've said about there being buildings on the east and west side of the Parkway in the north, things like the one-cent sales tax that we all pay that generates $34 million, and out of that, $25 million goes to the state because of the roads contract. But $9 million, we want to see some of that money spent in the north. So we're from the Social Justice Committee, and we thank you for asking, sir.
Other comments from the public?
Mr. President, is it adjourned?
Motion has been made to adjourn. This meeting is officially adjourned.